Welcome to the Lakeville Area Schools Board of Education Meeting. I am Judy Kelleher, Board of Education Chair. The meeting is called to order and I invite the members of the audience to please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And the following board directors are in attendance: Kathy Lewis, Sinta Schmitz, Teri Lind, and David Anderson. And also in attendance tonight is our Acting Superintendent, Dr. Emily McDonald, and our Executive Cabinet Members, Bill Holmgren, Tony Maseras, and Stephanie Cass. And so with that, we are going to move into good news. And we are going to start our good news with a recognition on behalf of the Board of Education in our district administration. We would like to have a special thank you, a very special thank you, to staff member Gordy Wenham, who has served 27 years supporting the recording and broadcasting functions for the Lakeville Area School Board meetings. Tonight is his last broadcast with us, and we thank him for his incredible support through many years of using donated equipment to setting up and recording meetings, to packing up equipment, and to eventually helping us design and set up the audiovisual components for this boardroom. We were one of the first boards, one of the first boards to do video recording and live streaming. And in total, he has recorded and edited over 800 Board of Education meetings, which totals over 3,200 hours. That's a lot of board meetings and dedication. So thank you, Gordy, for your service to the Lakeville Area Schools community. We are so lucky to have had your support, and we wish you all the best in your retirement and enjoying your next endeavors. And you're going to have to come out here and be on this side of the camera for a minute, and we're going to thank you, and we want to shake your hand and thank you for everything, Gordy. Come on, Gordy.
He is.
I know. He's got the wizard behind the curtain. So Gordy, thank you. Yes, thank you so much. And I want you to come around here and thank all, we want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So as he's going around thanking, so when he started recording, my daughter was maybe in kindergarten, and so she used to sit in the recording room with Gordy, and they used to share bad jokes all the time. So today, when I called her and I said, oh, today's his last broadcast, she goes, I remember all those bad jokes about the ducks and the stapling. It was just, she so remembers sitting back there with you and how much I appreciated that. But we really, what you have done to get us from where we were to where we are today, incredible. And then through COVID, hopping through all those hoops, couldn't have done it without you. Thank you, Gordy.
I only want to add that maybe they weren't bad jokes, but dad jokes?
No, they were bad jokes.
They came from teaching middle school.
Yes, yes, that's right. So Gordy, thank you so much. We appreciate it. Yes. All right. Dr. McDonald.
Yes, thank you so much. Some more good news to share with you this evening. First off, congratulations, a big congratulations to the Lakeville South High School Girls' lacrosse team on earning their very first state championship title. It's pretty amazing. The LSHS Cougars beat the Chan-Hassen Storm 10 to 7 during the 2022 Girls' Lacrosse Class A State Tournament Championship Game on June 18th. Congratulations to the entire team and the coaches as well. Also, congratulations to our Lakeville North High School Track and Field Athletes, Jack Kosher, Bryce Stefanowitz, Blake Like, Andrew Casey, on taking first place in the boys' 4x400-meter relay at the 2022 Track and Field Class AAA State Tournament on June 11th. In addition to earning the state championship title, these students actually set a new Lakeville North High School track record for the 4x400 relay record with a time of Way to go. Incredible work. For donations, a summary of our acceptance of gift donations is as follows. A total of $38,477.69 in donations of cash and/or materials were donated throughout all district locations from the following donors: Lakeville South Girls' Basketball, Mary Yockers, Craig Lowden, Kohlenhofer Agency, Cherry View PTO, Tim and Jackie Morstad, Karen Ballard, DLR Group through the Mankato Area Foundation, EVE PTO, Shutterfly, The Stray Cats, King Solutions, Box Tops, The Blackwad Giving Fund, Your Cause, and finally, Feeding It Forward donations. A complete listing of donations can be found in the board packet under the consent agenda. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I don't, we don't have any board communications and we don't have any agenda additions, correct?
Correct.
All right. So I need motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion by Lind.
Second.
Second by Lewis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda for further discussion? All right. Is there motion for the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Schmitz?
Second.
Second. Lind, any further comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And then we remove, we move to the report section, our community survey results. So we had viewing of this at our last work session, and just wonderful, wonderful news from our community survey. So we're really excited to be able to share it with you tonight.
That's right. Good evening, Board Chair, Board members, Acting Superintendent McDonald, executive colleagues, and community, both here in the audience and viewing. My name is Stephanie Cass. I'm the Communications Executive Director for Lakeville Schools. Tonight, I'm introducing the community survey report. With me tonight is Peter Leatherman of Morris Leatherman Company. He is the Chief Executive Officer. He's been a longstanding partner of Lakeville Schools, has done surveys for us in the past, as well as has done hundreds of surveys for communities and school districts and schools across Minnesota. Before we jump in, I wanted to just provide a little bit of background before Peter walks you through the survey. The administration developed this survey over several months this past school year. We really launched the discussion in December and worked through April to launch this process and survey overall. We knew at the time, we were still emerging from the COVID pandemic. We were still doing kind of mask on, mask off. We also were working through the strategic planning process with Teamworks International, and we knew we would be transitioning superintendents, leaders of our school district, as we walk into next school year. So the timing certainly felt right to gain some feedback from our community, and topics included just general sentiments, everything from how we handled the pandemic to feelings on our overall programming and curriculum and community ed offerings, as well as questions on communication. How are we communicating? Are we effective in that? How do you want to receive communication? To questions about diversity and inclusion, and a couple questions tied to the desired daily experience, which was part of our Teamworks International strategic plan. So that's kind of the background on that. The school board had the opportunity to view these results last week at our work session. So really, the intention of tonight's presentation is for our community. We know that feedback is critical for our success of our schools in our district, and transparency is also critical to have strong support now and into the future. So with that, I will hand it over to Peter to walk you through the results.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to be back here with you this evening to go through the results. This, as Steph had indicated, this will be a shorter presentation than the longer discussion that we had at the work session, kind of at the 30,000-foot level, shall we say, for the community to understand how residents feel about the district. For everybody to be on the same page of the methodology, we spoke with 400 randomly selected residents across the school district. The margin of error on a 400 sample is always plus or minus 5%. It doesn't matter the percent of the universe, a 400 sample, as long as it's random. So if it's Lakeville, Dakota County, or the state of Minnesota, it's plus or minus 5%. Within that sample of 400, we had approximately 160 parents. So what we did is we took that 160 out of the data set. We called an additional 240, put those together, and then we have a representative sample of parents, so we can look at attitude differences between the overall community and parents. That also is projectable to plus or minus 5%. The interviews were conducted between April 5th and April 28th, which seems like light years ago now in the travel of public opinion research. The average interview time was 17 minutes, non-response rate of 4%, once they realized we weren't voter IDing them or selling them anything. And the cell phone only households, it's a majority in the Lakeville School District, 55%. The younger generation, shock, there's still people that have landline only, it's 9% in the district.
Both.
Both, cell phone, landline, 36%. Now, there are a series of other demographics that are available on the district website, so you can see the profile, the sample. But on the key demographics, if we look at households with children, households with seniors, homeowners versus renters, on ethnicity, all within the margin of error, that plus or five, plus or minus 5% that we see in the updated census information that's finally coming out. So we'll start in the big picture. What do folks like most about the school district? For the purpose of the presentation, the overall results are going to be the blue bar. The yellow bar will be the parent response. So the community, they can tell us anything, we collapse them into categories. Good teachers leads the list at 19%, followed by variety of programs, good academics, high achievement stats, and then obviously with the successful lacrosse team. Sports also comes in highly in Lakeville at 9%. Most districts fall into three categories on this like most. It's the personnel side, the teachers, 19%, the variety of programs offered, 17%, and then it is the academics, what's actually happening in the classroom. And you can see that you have 14%, 10%, and throw in high standards, you have 27%. So it actually leads the list in what folks like most is what's happening academically in the classroom in the school district. Amongst parents, it's a little more even, with all three of those categories within the margin of error between the teachers, the variety of programs, and the achievement and the academics in the classroom. Now, how do folks rate the district on handling the pandemic? This, I will put, I always give a caveat to the school board, this has changed since the start of the school year, the start of the school year of 2020. In April, people were very positive on how you've handled it. 58% of the community rated it positively, 20%, 25% rated it only fair or poor. On this one, we look at a ratio. There was, there were multiple points, and they both centered around the start of each of those last school years, where the norm on this was 50/50. And so what happened over the school year is the norm became 2 to 1 once things became settled. You can see you're actually better than 2 to 1 at 58 to 25. Amongst parents, a stronger endorsement, 70% positive to 27% unpositive. The community as a whole is more unsure. For the purpose, we didn't go through the demographics, but for the, those watching, 45% of the sample were parents, 55% of the sample were non-parents. So that's the makeup as you look at the overall results. Now that we've discussed the pandemic, we then asked, what's the most serious issue facing the district? Having let them voice their concern or praise about the pandemic, what's the most serious issue? The first thing we look at for this, is there anything that hits 20 to 25%? Are 1 in 5, 1 in 4 people coalescing around a response? We consider that to be a major issue. You don't have anything that hits that level. You have one issue that hits the high teens, and that's the lack of funding amongst the overall community as a whole. Everything else is in single digits, from large class sizes to lack of diversity to poor discipline, keeping quality teachers, all of those sorts of things. But there are no major, major issues outside of a concern about the potential lack of funding. You're not unique on that as a concern in all the metro area and all the statewide surveys we do. Now, parents are a little bit different on this. They actually don't have anything that goes above 15%. They have three items that hit double digits, two political, large class sizes, and the lack of funding. The key on this chart, though, if we go down to the bottom, those are the boosters. Those are the folks that say there are no problems in the school district. The norm right now, pre-pandemic, the norm was 10%. It's actually gone down to 5%. So you have 1 in 10 folks here that see no problems, and they're consistent throughout. They're supportive of the school district and favorable throughout the survey. Amongst parents, it's 1 in 5, and the norm on that right now is about 12%. So on both of these, you're about double that booster core of people that have and see no issues in the school district. Overall evaluation then of the quality of education. 87% in the district rate the quality of education favorably, 12% rate it unfavorably. Amongst the parents, it's 93 to 7. Now, the norm on this is typically somewhere between 85 and 90%, rating it excellent or good. You're at 87% right within the norm. What differentiates school districts, Minnesotans are very difficult graders. We don't get enthusiastic about a lot of things. And so what differentiates is the excellent category, okay? That 26%, that's twice as high as the norm right now. The norm pre-pandemic, just, it's pre-pandemic, post-pandemic norms have just come into play. It's just changed public opinion. Pre-pandemic, the norm was 20%. Right now, we're at 12% as an excellent rating. Folks have not shifted into the unfavorable categories. They've just gone from the sought, the strong positive to the soft positive, because there is a concern across the state about kids that have fallen behind because of the pandemic. How do they rate the quality of education compared to three years ago? This one, we always look at a ratio, the better versus the worse. 42% say the district's much better than it was, or somewhat better, 11% worse. So it's just under a 4 to 1 ratio, moving in the right direction. Norm on this right now is 2 to 1. Multiple points during this pandemic, it's been actually 1 to 1. There are still districts that have people saying it's worse now than it was before three years ago. Amongst parents, 38 to 13, it's a 3 to 1 ratio. They're right at the norm. You can see parents are more likely to say about the same. How does the district do on meeting the learning needs of all students, most students, only some students, or very few? Well, first off, the all students, it's a very stringent category to say all student learning needs are being met. You're one of now five, just had another one come off the computer this week, over the pandemic, that actually has a majority of people saying all student needs are being met. Before the pandemic, the norm was 48%. That's down to under 40% in all student needs. You're better than 20 points saying all student needs are being met. Amongst parents, it's 56%. We follow up with those that say most, only some, or very few. You had one in each sample say very few. It doesn't register to more than a, it doesn't register to a percent because it's 1 out of 400. But those that said most or only some, we follow up and ask, is there a type of student whose learning needs are not being met? You can see a theme of, it's the average student, struggling, special education, and students of color. And that's been a very consistent theme now over, even, this goes back before the pandemic. Those are the four categories that typically get pointed to if they don't think all students' needs are being met. But the key takeaway is, is the almost 60% that say you're meeting the learning needs of all people, of all students. Now, we asked the question to understand what goes into their ranking and when they think about quality of education. And the question is, which one of the following indicators is most important in shaping your perception of a high-quality school district? The blue bars, the overall, 2 lead the list, and that is percentage of high school graduates going on for further education and a curriculum that prepares students with the skills, pathways, and experiences to be successful after graduation. Both of those tie for the community, 1 in 5 residents pointing to that. What comes in next is the variety, offers a wide variety of enrichment, activity, and sports programming, the number of students in the classroom, student scores on standardized tests, and then support the social and emotional needs of all students at 10%. You can see there is a difference in attitudes amongst, between the community and the parents, though. Almost twice as many parents say it's the curriculum that prepares students with the skills and pathways and experiences to be successful after graduation. The other item that almost doubles, and this is consistent with everything we've seen in the past year in the research, the growing concern on the social and emotional needs of students. Parents, it goes from 10% to 18%. Almost 1 in 5 parents are pointing to that's the most important indicator. So there is a divergence between the community as a whole and parents on what they're thinking about when they think about a high-quality school district. Now, how would they rate the Lakeville Area Schools on those indicators? Let's go to the ones that are rated the hot, that had the most support. First off, the curriculum that prepares the students, both samples, 4 out of 5 indicate, give the Lakeville Area Schools a favorable rating on that indicator. So the most important indicator is rated very highly. College graduates going on to further education, 90% and 84%. And then the other one to point to is the social and emotional needs aspect, because it was so much higher amongst parents. Amongst the overall sample, it wasn't so much that they were unfavorable, they were more likely to say they didn't know. So more communication, more sharing, because this is a concern not only of parents but non-parents, because it's in the news a lot about the social and emotional needs of students. Parents, much more positive with, because they have much more experience, at 77%. What about going through a list and just asking, do they agree that the phrases apply to the Lakeville Area School District? At the top, does the district promote excellence? 9 and 1/2 out of 10 in both samples indicate you do. Are you innovative? 9 out of 10 in both samples agree with that statement. High achieving, 95% in both samples. Meeting the learning needs of all students. You can see there's the gap between the overall sample and the parent sample. That's also driven by the level of uncertainty. You had more non-parents willing to say that they were unsure. Responsiveness to community needs, the similar distinction, it's not, it's not disagreement, it's unfavorable. Obviously, since Uvalde, a very key factor is safety. 94% in both samples agree that the Lakeville Area Schools are safe. And then welcoming and engaging, very strong at 84, and amongst parents, 94% agreeing with that statement. If we go through just some general perceptions of the district, do folks think that you spend taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently? Overall, the community, 76% agree with that statement, 11% disagree, 13% are unsure. That's outstanding. The norm on that right now is 57%. You're almost 20 points higher in the financial of spending taxpayers' money efficiently. You can see parents feel the same way, 75 to 12. Are the schools a good value for the investment? Absolutely. 9 out of 10, and the 95% of parents. Do they trust you to do what's right for children? This has gone back and forth over the course of the pandemic, depending on a lot of the positions people held on COVID protocols. Right now, you're 8 to 1. The norm on this is 4 to 1. So you're more than double. It's just outstanding, there's a trust level, and amongst parents, it's 84 to 12. They trust you to do what's right for children. What about decision-making? Now, the trust is there, but they might have some specific decisions that might, they might not feel all that great about. The decision-making, 62/22, about a 3 to 1. Right now, the norm is 2 to 1, and there was a long stretch between fall of 2020 and the winter of '21, where the norm was almost 1 to 1 with satisfaction, because kind of districts got into position, no matter which, how they decided an issue, half the people were upset by the result. And if they decided the other way, the other half were upset by the result. But this is, this is more bouncing. You can see amongst parents, it's 4 to 1 satisfaction with the decision-making. Does the district do a good job of involving the community in decisions? You're about 8, 9 points higher than the norm on this, very strong, because the norm's gone down, because it's been hard to involve the community. When you're doing things virtually, you're not meeting in person. So however the district's handled the pandemic, people still do have a sense of empowerment, that they are involved in decisions, and parents even more so, at 81%. And then on, finally on this list, are they proud and would they recommend the schools? Absolutely. 86% and 91%. We read four statements to folks and asked them to indicate if they agreed or disagreed around diversity and equity in education. The first statement is, "The Lakeville Area School District should eliminate barriers and bias when present in the school system to create an inclusive learning environment for all students." 86% of the community agrees with that statement, 92% of parents agree with that statement. How about, "Does the broader community have a role to play in creating an environment in Lakeville Area Schools that celebrate all cultures and all races?" 89 and 94% of parents agree with that statement. How about, "Should the district invest resources in closing the achievement gaps between student groups based on race, socioeconomic status, and ability?" Yes. So it's not only a belief in the principle, they actually believe also in the investment in that principle. Eight, more than 80% in both samples. And then finally, "The Lakeville Area School District supports and embraces diversity in the schools." 86, or, I'm sorry, 81% of the community, 89% of parents. You can see disagreement right at about 10%. The parents were just more likely to say that they, or the overall community more likely to say they're unsure. So the district overall does see the value in these initiatives with diversity and equity, but most importantly, they're willing to invest resources in order to help, especially closing the achievement gap. Job performance ratings. I told you at the work session, these would have been very different at different points during the pandemic, but this is where we are at now. Amongst the community as a whole, it's 61 to 20, okay? It's 3 to 1. The norm on this is about 1 and 1/2 to 1. It's approaching 2 to 1. So you have more people favorable. Amongst parents, it's 67/23. The superintendent and administration, now obviously the transition's happening right now, so you had more people saying, I'm not sure, I'm not going to rate the superintendent administration. Those that had an opinion, 51 to 8. Better than 6 to 1, those formulating an opinion. The norm on superintendent and administration right now is 3 to 1. So a strong endorsement of that. Principles, the closer you get to the kids, hopefully the results are stronger, and we see that. 73% favorable, 90% amongst parents, and then teachers, 84%, with 93% of parents rating the teachers favorably. Strong ratings across the board. The two items to look at is the uncertain level of the board and the administration. And part of that has to do with the transition, but we also do know, in all the research that we've been doing over the pandemic, that non-parents, the 55% in, in your district that don't have kids, have not been focused on local government like they were in the past. There's been obviously a lot of macro, national, international, statewide issues that have taken their focus away, and they're just not paying attention to the level that they were in the past. How about an overall evaluation then of financial management? Well, we've touched on it in some of those agree/disagree statements earlier. 70% of the community rate the financial management positively, 20% unfavorably. Amongst parents, 68 to 18. The norm on this is 50%. The 70% is extraordinarily strong. And you pair that up with the agreement at levels at 70, I believe 76% off the top of my head for spending taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently. The district does have a reservoir of goodwill when it comes to financial credibility. They really do feel that you do manage the finances appropriately in the school district. How about information levels? Now, at the same time, it's hard to communicate with non-parents, and the focus has obviously been in communicating with parents, because it's been hyper-focused, as parents needed to know what was happening from day to day or week to week. You still have 2/3 of the community indicating that they feel somewhat informed about decisions. That's very high as an evaluation. But the parents, almost 90% indicate that they're at least somewhat informed about decisions the board makes, only 12%. Folks really do feel informed, and that's important to put that in context when you think about the ratings. Folks really do feel informed, and that's important to put that in context when you think about the ratings you've seen. Sometimes higher information levels doesn't, don't necessarily lead to higher evaluations. Sometimes the more you know, the less you like. That's not the case here, you have higher levels of information and very strong ratings. Are they interested in information about the Lakeville school district? Yeah, 67% indicate they're at least somewhat interested, keeping in mind that only 45% have children. So you do have a higher level of, of non-parents interested, but amongst parents, obviously insatiable. 93%, I'm sorry, 95% indicating that they're interested. How about informing the community in a timely manner? Especially amongst parents, this has been critical with the pandemic. You almost have a majority of parents saying the district's done an excellent job in informing in a timely manner, and nine out of 10 rating the district favorably, just outstanding. How do they prefer to receive information from the district? On this one, I always tell clients, look at this print versus electronic. So the community as a whole, you have 23% that point to the district newsletter, 13% the local newspaper, 3% mailings. So you have about 36% indicating that they would like something in their hands. That's their preference. On the flip side, on the electronic side, the district website, email, social media, e-newsletter, all write about 40%. You have a pretty even split amongst the community as a whole, and you have very specific demographics that have that preference. So the district's going to have to continue to provide both. A lot of districts hope that one day you can just do one or the other, but it's going to be necessary to do both. You can see, though, amongst parents, the email is set in stone. The pandemic solidified the fact that the best way to communicate with parents was email because of the immediacy that they can receive the information they need. One other thing I'll point to, word of mouth, it's alive. It's 11%, one in 10 people prefer to receive information from somebody else. Not a source of, not an actual source of information from a person. In that sense, Lakeville's a very small town, outstate Minnesota than a large suburban school district. And then finally, as Steph mentioned, we did go into community education. I had a presentation with the Community Education Advisory Council this afternoon. And we just thought we'd just put up the evaluation on community ed for the community because this is an important touchstone in the district as, as we showed you last week in, in the positive ratings that come out of the demographics that don't have kids in the school district. Overall evaluation of the rating, the community education, amongst those in the community, it's 67 to seven. Almost a 10 to one ratio, almost double the norm. Amongst parents, the user rate is higher by about 25 points, and the ratings are higher, 88 to five. The community education is really kind of a jewel. It's, it's a touch point that solidifies the relationship with parents with the school district, but it exposes non-parents, you're a typical constituent, to have much more, love, higher levels of information and much, many more favorable opinions about the school district. With that, I'll answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions? So this is a short version of what we saw in our work session, our study session. But very positive news, and it supported what we, what we thought and, or actually re, over-reinforced what we thought and what we were hoping. So questions or comments from board members? Yep, into the microphone.
Thank you. Very, very pleased with the results, but I would certainly like to thank our communications department. I think they have done a marvelous job, and community ed with the difficulties of going through the pandemic, they also have continued. If there was one, two groups I would choose besides the administration and staff, so.
Any other comments or questions? So, thank you. We were really, really good news to share, and then this information will be posted on the website so our community members can go and take a look at it and view it even deeper. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for the work, and Steph, thank you for you and your team doing that. Appreciate it. All right, and then the next report is the facility use rate proposal. Mr. Holmgren.
Madam Chair, members of the school board, superintendent, acting superintendent.
The.
I have to get out of what's here, hang on one second. There we go.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, tonight we're going to talk about some facility rate update, really as a proposal from the administration on some changes that looking at making. We're going to first talk about the actual rates, especially on our class two and three rates. Talk about the pool as we have a new pool, we're really going to get our, our rates updated in that situation. And then an introduction of a new operations fee. It's been 16 years since we made any type of a change, any type of rates in our facilities. So that's what we're really looking at, trying to bring that up a little bit, trying to find a way to cover some of our expenses. So in our class two and class three rental rates, that increase is running about 30%. I guess, and at the same time, over 16 years, that's less than inflation. And then going forward, we would bring an annual review to you instead of a 16-year gap. So we'll talk about it again a year from now. When we look at our pool, now that we have three pools, these are the new rates that we're, we're suggesting bringing forward. We did a lot of work looking at surrounding pools around us. Now that we really have a state-of-the-art pool that, like our class three, so if someone really comes in from the outside and wants to use our pool for some type of competition, you can see there, that, that, that rate then will be about $350. Where now we're, we're really hardly charging anything. So this will help us with our operating costs to keep this, these pools open, keep the water moving and clear and warm. It takes a lot of funds. When we look at our local swim clubs, we do them, we do give them a subsidized rate. You can see that right now, they pay $26 an hour using one of our pools. We're looking at moving that to 29 in the two older pools and up to 38 in the, the new pool. And having a tiered change, so then again, a year from now. Then it would bring us up closer to what they're paying in other, other districts for the same use.
Bill?
Yes.
Is this for competition or not? It says for non.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Non-competitive.
The plan is to actually, when they actually have a competition and they're, they're, they have gate fees, they're collecting a lot of fees, then we would charge them the class two rates for that particular, particular night.
Kathy, can you pull the microphone closer?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, can you pull the microphone closer to you? Thank you.
No, I want to, just an introduction of an operations fee when we look at our class ones. And our class ones are our, our local people, organizations that are local here in, in Lakeville. And we really, you know, on a yearly basis, we have a lot of equipment that our community uses that gets wore out, we need to replace them. Every time we have someone come in, you know, we have to turn on the lights, we got to turn on the heat, we got to turn on the air conditioning. So this, this operation fee we're going to talk about tonight doesn't come close to covering any of those costs, but it's a small step, just a small step in the, in the right direction to start covering some of the costs that we have. Okay, the money also contributes to our logical support and planning. And again, it's only applies to our class one user groups, and these fees are deposited into the general fund, they are not deposited into the community education.
So they don't go into like any kind of a facility maintenance fund or?
That's what it's for.
Okay.
It's for the maintenance and the general fund to take care of these, mainly our gymnasiums and our pools.
Okay.
It might be beneficial to the audience to tell what class one, two, and three is.
Okay, I will give it a stab, and then I'll have, actually, I'll just have her come up. Because she does a very good job at defining which group is which, I don't want to miss something.
Good evening, everyone. The short version, our class ones are our local nonprofit youth and adult organizations, our park and rec departments through the city, as well as just not-for-profit organizations that are local. Class two is the exact opposite of that, they're not local, and they're still nonprofit. So for example, someone from a city north of us wants to come and use our facility, and they are a nonprofit youth group, then they would be a class two. And then class three is any for-profit business.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Devin. Told you she'd do a better job than me trying to explain. Okay, going on then to talk about the different, we're looking at a tiered system of, of the fees. Right now, as you can see in the bottom, we have a, do use a consumable fee for some of our bigger groups that come in. We're eliminating that fee and just going to a straight operation fee. So again, as these groups come in and use our facilities for practices or, or, you know, small, small events, they aren't getting charged, just, just like now, nothing has changed there. But when we get, get to be, some bigger groups come in where we have, we have support from our side. When we talk about some of the people who are in the buildings supporting these groups, and you can see from 50 to 200, we're looking at a $15 an hour. Again, this doesn't, doesn't cover our cost, but it helps us a little bit. When we get to our bigger groups, like get to the 200 to 1,000 people into one of our buildings, we're gonna, we're looking at charging a $25 an hour. And of course, huge, there's a few of these that happen during the year where we have over 1,000 people in our building. Then we'd be charging $50 an hour for that.
That's class.
This is class one.
Class one only.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, with the, there's a several, there's a separate rental rate for the class two and class threes. Which are much higher than. So it's scheduled, again, for our class ones, we're not looking at making an immediate change. It's a whole year from now, so September of '23 is when we suggest this operating, operations fee to go into effect. For our class two and class three, and the pool rates to start here, the first of September in this year. So up to two months from now. Another small piece, again, is our summer camp fees too, they're, they're very low. To increase those by $2 for next summer, not, nothing happening this year, but we all for next summer. Okay, with that said, then, is there any, are there any questions?
Again, the board had this presented to us at our study session, and so the purpose of tonight is to report it out to the community. I'm going to call it a first reading, just, but, and then we'll be voting on this at our next meeting on July 12th.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll post this information out to the community and see it.
Yep, on the website, yep. So any questions?
I'm just thinking that going farther, if we have larger groups, I mean, really large groups using our pools, I'm, I'm more concerned about the pools at this point. Like college for a competition or something like that. Do they have that, do they just fall into class three, or is there even a separate?
No, that is a class fee, that'd be the highest area where you see we had a rate of $350. Besides that, we do have them reimburse us from, from some direct help, like a, like a custodian that has to be on site. They also pay for that, reimburses our cost for those, those types of employees on site.
And how about for the Minnesota State High School League, if any of our facilities get used? And this is all for indoor facility use, this doesn't?
Yeah, we haven't gone to the outdoor yet, that's something I think we talk about in the future. We have a lot of use with our act, with our outdoor, especially now that we have turf fields all over the district. But we haven't gone there yet, this is all for inside, it's mainly our gyms and our pools.
So does the Minnesota State High School League, do they get a pass on the fees, or are they a class three too?
What have we done in the past? Because, you know, that's a balancing act, because we have a lot of local, our own kids are.
I, I appreciate that, that's why I think it's a very sensitive issue.
So the MSHSL, when it's a Lakeville high school activity that is their sport, our, our, our students and our student athletes, that is considered a district-sponsored function. We have some amazing facilities, so we do host sections for many, excuse me, many other sports. And I am going to have to actually defer to get you that information of what that, what that looks like as far as a breakdown. Because I do know that there are some costs in line with hosting sections, but I don't want to speak without having detail. So I'm happy to get those to Bill.
Because I'm, I'm speaking, I think, more of the, when you get into the sections and up, as opposed to just the regular competition games. So, thank you.
One thing I can say when we talk about some of our section meets that come in, what happens with the State High School League, like gives us a budget. Like, we, we want to do this meet in your district, and we'll give you this much funds to pay for, especially the referees that we have to have in place. So the district pays for those things, and they more or less reimburse us for that.
Okay.
And what happens too is at the end of the year with Minnesota State High School League, if, if we participated into a state tournament somewhere, then when they, if they have any excess at the end of the year, they kind of divvy those funds back out. Not that it's always a lot of funds, but we sometimes get a little bit back.
Okay, thank you.
All right, yes, Director Lind.
The reason I think we want this as a report tonight is we now have two weeks that the public can, can reflect on this. Because I don't think there's a lot of stakeholder input in setting these things, and I, and I get that. But this gives them the opportunity to, if they see red flags and any, because we had in the past a few emails that had some big red flags on some other issues, and hopefully this will prevent that because it seems to be very clear.
Yeah, and if you remember what we talked about last, last week, we looked at our highest users. And the very highest user, the change or the difference in what they would pay in a 12-month period was 2,500. And that was by far the highest, everyone else was much lower than that.
Right. But it was good information, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, well, very good. So this will be for the community review for the next couple of weeks, and it'll come back to us as a recommended action on July 12th. So tonight's recommended action for tonight is the approval of the FY '23 budget.
Yes, we'll be, we'll be running through the fiscal year '23 preliminary budget. Again, we need to have this budget in place before we get to the first of, you know, July, get the right month going here. In order for us to spend any money in the next fiscal year, we have to have a budget in place. So that's what we'll be presenting tonight. Just a, a little update on the, on the assumptions that we're using for the budget for next year. The state of Minnesota has given us 2% new money on our, the formula allowance. That's what we get paid by, for every single student that we have in, in the district by the state of Minnesota. Another thing that's happening in our district, as you know, we have increased enrollment. That's increasing by about 2%, a little bit over 2% on a yearly basis. You can see that that's generating us the formula allowance at 2.3 million, and the enrollment growth also at almost $2.3 million. Our special edge program, of course, is growing. There is a cap at how much the state of Minnesota will actually give us towards specialized funding. But that cap increases on a 4% basis, on a yearly basis. So that will generate us about 4, about $760,000 for next year. And then our operating levies, if you remember, we have an inflation factor built into our operating levies on all of them that we have, which is great news, so we get a little increase so we don't see our operating level, operating levies shrinking on a yearly basis. In the year we're going into, the state gave us a 1.9% increase there, generating us $308,000. I'll bring forward to you when I find out what we have for next year, because I think will, you know, be a little different because we do have some inflation in the state of Minnesota. But that's going to be available to us the end of July, so I don't have those numbers yet. And again, our operating levy is based on our student count, so we also have the enrollment increase of 2% there too, about $325,000. Lease levy, again, is, we're up to our cap on lease levy, as you know, we've gone and we've added some, we're actually about, you know, five additions to different elementary buildings. But there is a limit of how much money that we can go lease levy to put these additions on. We are at the cap, we're at the, the end, but the last new payment goes into, comes on now this year, of the $952,000 for the, the last three additions we put on our elementary schools. So we'll see some increase volume in our general fund, but it goes to one place. And again, LTFM also the same. When we look at our levy on a yearly basis, we really try to keep it as level as possible. And this year, we saw some decreases in different areas, so we shifted some of the LTFM funds out of Fund Six or borrowing. So we borrowed less money and just did our levy as we go here, so that our levy is approximately the same, and it will take pressure off of our debt service in the future. COVID funds, as you know, during COVID, we've got some, actually quite a. COVID funds, as you know, during COVID, we've got some, actually quite a few different grants. We were up over $6 million in the, in the year of COVID. But we do still have some funds left to use up, about 1.3 million for next year, and again, 1.3 million in fiscal '24. Here is an enrollment, you can see, we're pretty much hitting these numbers right on the head, when you see that, we have, we had projected for '21, '22, that October 1 count at 11,512, well, that's what we got, we got 11,512. So it's very interesting, it's been very close, so I feel good about that, trying to budget, and we're hitting those enrollment numbers. So we are expecting 11,780 here this fall, and I expect that to happen, because we finished the year in, in June at 11,700 students. So to get 80 more is very likely when we look at this fall. Now, to touch on the actual, the separate categories, when we look at our revenue, our local revenue and our general fund, you see a little increases here, about $100,000. And what this really is, is we're seeing our interest rates actually increase on the funds that we have invested, so this, we expect another $100,000 here. Our state sources, of course, we just talked about those, our formula allowance, along with our special education and our increased enrollment generates us about $6.3 million. Our property taxes, here are our operating levies, sit here, and the, the LTFM funds that we will be using at 4.7 million. Federal sources, you see a small decrease here, that is COVID funds less from the year before, because all of our grant money for the federal government sits in this federal sources area. But you can see an increase in the general fund of $10.6 million for next year. Looking at the expenditure side, you can see salaries and benefits, that's where we're seeing our increases, of course, we do have new contracts for everybody, so those increases are there, but the main increase here is really due to new staff, to cover that 2% new students, so quite a few staff, have you, you saw in the, in your memo tonight from HR, there's a lot of hiring going on.
Yep.
It always makes me nervous. Our purchase services really isn't a huge change, really what these are, again, is some COVID funds that run through these areas, both in the last couple of years. So, small decrease here, both in our purchase services and our supplies, due to less COVID funds. Our equipment cost that you're seeing here, again, is our LTFM, and the payment for our lease levy for additions.
Would purchase services include the teachers on call?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
We look at, a little different way to look at it, we move from our object, when we look at just salaries and benefits and so forth, now look at the actual program areas. And again, we look at the admin and the district support, these are increases to the, the staff that we have onsite, but you can see the big increase here, 5.8 million, is our general education, and that is our new staffing, coming on for next year. Our vocational, you see a small increase, we really haven't changed our vocational programming, but our staff has done a very good job at finding out what is eligible for vocational and what is not, and we found some different classes that they're using to make vocational eligible, so we'll get more reimbursement for the teachers in these areas. Special education, we're seeing about a, a half million dollar increase overall. Okay, student services, again, these are, we had a lot of COVID funds running through our, our student support area and our students and services in the last couple of years. So these decreases are due directly to the COVID decrease that we have from the federal government. And buildings and grounds, again, of course, that's where all the LTFM is running and the payment for the additions, you've seen that 4.7 increase. So overall, we are seeing an $11 million increase in the budget, in the general fund for next year. Now here's a, a look, first, I guess, first we'll just touch on the general fund, top line, you see that our fund balance is decreasing there by four and a half million dollars. We'll talk about the components of that in a minute, because it's not as bad as it looks, so we'll, we'll look at it a little different way here in a minute. Student nutrition, you see that's down. We're really going back to student nutrition as it was back in '19, where we don't have free meals for all of our students anymore. That really helped our food service account. We got a higher, we, reimbursement from the federal government during, during COVID, and we had less staff costs, because we didn't have to run any of the POS machines. So, next year, we're gonna have more cost, and we're really looking at probably a little bit less revenue at the same time. So, we're projecting a little decrease, but at the same time, this fund is actually too large. After we finished the audit last fall, we got notice from MDE, it's like, your fund balance for food service is too large, find a way to buy it down. And one thing we are doing immediately is using some of those funds to help with our new building and our kitchen area, about the equipment we're buying. We're moving $350,000 out of this fund to cover some of those costs for that new building, so that is helpful.
So like the bid that we approved tonight, in the consent agenda for the new kitchen, some of that is coming out.
$350,000 of that five, I think it was 500, about 524 approximately. Yeah, $350,000 will come directly from the food service fund.
Wonderful, thank you.
But yeah, so that is good news. Okay, moving on to community service, here's another fund that really, really got hit during COVID. Their programs almost went to an absolute halt, when people stopped coming in and participating, because they are totally rely on revenue from, or user fees, to take care of their budget. So you can see that they fell down to a negative balance this last year, and they're working on trying to improve that. So I'm interested in how we finish out this year, I think it's gonna be a little better than it's anticipated here, but we always try to be very conservative in our budgeting, so we don't have, come back and make it look worse, so.
So, how are we going to, I don't want to say assist them or allow them, but how do they, do they have a plan yet of how they're going to increase that? Are we gonna be able to transfer funds over to them, or?
Okay, well, two things. First of all, they're doing a very good job bringing their programming back up, they're back with waiting lists on students wanting to come in. So, the year before COVID, they actually increased their fund balance by over $300,000. So I, I expect that to kind of come back around, and that, I mean, it'll take some time to get back to where they were, but that will rebound over a period of years. We did help them a little bit with some COVID funds, and the decrease that they had last year, to bring them up to zero balance. So we'll look at that again, when we finish the year this year, to really see where they're at, and see really where their fund balance is at.
I would appreciate that, because especially with the way the survey results are, of how people view community ed, and the fact of who in the community uses that, and it's, previous surveys have shown that community ed is where people, obviously who don't have children in school, many of them do get access to school facilities, programming, et cetera, through community ed, that's very favorable, so I think it's good to be able to support them in offering whatever services, or classes, or whatever it is that they need. It's like a win-win for everyone. So, thank you.
Moving on to the building fund, of course, we're seeing a decrease in the fund balance here, but that's, that's natural, we're starting, we'll be, be breaking ground very soon on our new building, so we're spending a lot of money there. The community, the, the security project, also, quite a few funds will be going out this next year, so it's normal to see that, the, the little bit of revenue there, that's some interest that we expect to receive on the money that's set aside for that. Our debt service, every year, the state of Minnesota allows us to levy 105% of what we need, so we do do that, but from time to time, that, because we don't necessarily need a whole 5%, that, that builds up a little bit, and we actually give those funds back to the community members. So that's why you're seeing this decrease of 374, and that's a lower taxes going back to our community in the debt service area. The trust fund is 100%, it's changed over the years, but now it's 100% scholarship, so these are funds that have been deposited by different community members, and set aside only for scholarships. So that 8,000 you're seeing there is the expectation of what we would take, first, first of all, that we would get in interest and then use for our students. So that, that 873 is something that we won't touch, that'll stay there indefinitely. Internal service fund is our insurance fund, our self-insurance fund. We did dental for a very, very long time, but now we're in our third year of actually having our health insurance self-funded. So we started with a zero balance not very long ago, and you can see that's built up now, to looking at, we're expected to be about 4.6, almost 4.7 million dollars at the end of next year. We're really, a goal there is to try to get that fund balance up close to that $6 million mark, to before we can really start buying down our premiums and saving a little more money. At the same time though, we, you know, trend on health insurance is right around 10%. Our increase overall is 8% going into next year, so we have saved some money in this area, but I have high hopes for the close future. Okay, let's talk about fund balance. Here's our different components of fund balance. Our non-spendable, this is either, it's a prepaid, something we paid in, in one year that gets used in the next, that runs around $85,000 on a, on a regular basis. But our restricted funds, you can see is falling. And what that really is, is, these restricted funds are funds that we get from the state of Minnesota, that we have to use in a certain way. So, it's our staff development funds, it's our capital funds, it's our LTF funds. So we are spending some of these areas down a little more than we're bringing in this year. So when we talk about that 4.5 million dollar decrease, well, 2.2 of it is here in, in our restricted area, which isn't, which is not hurting our general fund at all. So when we look at our unassigned number, and we see what's dropping there, it's about, we're back to that two, here, look here, 2.4 million dollars. And I know when I came to you last February with a projection, we looked at a five-year projection on our budget, and we did talk about, about 2.2 million dollars as a decrease in our fund balance on an ongoing basis, and that's kind of what's been happening. See, last year was 1.8, this year was 2.1, I mean, for next year, it'd be 2.2. So that's kind of where we're looking at, dropping that down close to where our fund balance policy at, so we have to do some, some hard look at some of our programming as we come into this next year, so you get an idea here what's happening with our, with our fund balance. So, of course, you know, you know, we can't go forever, but we are okay for now, and we are above where we need to be.
And so just, what we're, what, tonight, we're voting on the budget, and during the year, we do make some adjustments to the budget. We usually budget very conservatively, and so, you know, there are adjustments that we do make throughout the year, as we get more real with the numbers.
Well, we'll look at our October 1 count this fall on our students, see, see that we're in line, and then once we get through our audit, we have everything settled, then we can back and look, I'll always bring you a revised budget.
Correct. And again, this was another topic at our study session this past Tuesday, so we've talked about this and went through it pretty extensively, so, any questions or comments?
I just have one question.
Yep.
In regards to the COVID budget, are there restrictions on where that can be spent? And if so, where can that be spent?
Well, what we have left is really funds that need to be used to help students who are behind, and that's, and that's where we're spending it at.
On the learning side.
Yep, on, on the front end, it was kind of wide open, we use it for all kinds of things, but now it's very specific.
Would that also include social, emotional needs of students?
Absolutely.
No, not just academic?
Yes, it's baseball.
Yeah, it's, yep. Any other questions? All right, so then, is there a motion for the approval of the fiscal year '23 budget?
So moved.
We have a motion by Lewis, is there a second? We have a second for the budget?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Lind. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the second recommended action for this evening is the approval of Policy 520, student surveys. Tony.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Acting Superintendent McDonald. Two weeks ago, on June 14th, we brought forward a first reading of the revised student surveys policy. We have received some feedback from both internal and external stakeholders, but really there's not any substantive changes from the, the original draft that was presented two weeks ago. I think the key point again is that we are putting in place an opt-out process, and I think the, the thinking around that is, one, to meet legal requirements with this policy. We do need to have an opt-in option for any federally funded surveys, which I do not believe we regularly use, I can't recall ever doing that, so it really is going to establish the process of an opt-out for, for student surveys. The, the other point that, that we've made is, the reason for this change is the administrative capacity that we have to manage an opt-in process, we simply don't have that capacity currently to, to implement a system of that nature. And, and the third consideration is really respecting and acknowledging parental choice, and we feel that these changes will accomplish that. I think I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that I know that what drove some of this was the Minnesota student survey and some concerns around that. From our perspective, that, that is a separate issue from this policy, and we believe that before the next one goes out in three years, there probably does need to be more discussion about what do we use that data for, and what is the value of it, and make sure that, that parents are aware, I believe right now, we provide six weeks' notice of the survey, so they know what's, what's coming. But again, I feel that that is a, a separate issue that will be addressed at a later date from this policy recommendation and change. So with that, the administration is recommending that Policy 520 be approved this evening, as presented to the, to the board.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval of Policy 520?
I'll move.
Motion by Lewis, is there a second? Is there a second for the approval of Policy 520?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second by Anderson. And any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much.
And then we have no additions to the report, superintendent's report.
Thank you so much. Just a quick update, as you all in the community know, we are very excited to welcome Dr. Van Zile to our district, just a few days from now. We had the pleasure of having him with us last Tuesday for our work session, and he came and participated, which was just a wonderful experience to have him there. He also was able to attend our strategic planning session with our administrators last Thursday, got a chance to say a few words, and then meet some of our leaders that were able to attend that day. And then we met today with Executive Director of Communications, Stephanie Cass, on basically the plan for welcoming him, him into the district and providing opportunities for our internal and our external stakeholders to get to know him a little bit better. So I know he's really excited to join the team, and it's just been a pleasure to, even though he isn't officially started yet, he's just digging in and engaging in the work alongside of the rest of us, so that's my only update for tonight, we're excited to have him fully on board next week.
Yeah, he's been, it's been, his commitment already has just been wonderful, he's not officially on board until after the holidays, so we're really pleased with that, and that he was able to work remote for his other position. So, all right, then with that, an adjournment. Motion for adjournment.
Oh, I'll move.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, you guys all jump on that one, thanks. Motion by Schmitz and a second by Anderson, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And thank you for joining our meeting and being engaged. Please note, these meetings can also be viewed live on cable channel 188, livestreamed on the district website, and watched on demand via the recorded meetings posted on the district website. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is July 12th, and Gordy, thank you again for everything, it's been wonderful. Good evening, everyone.
Cheers.
And Emily?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.